Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. It is ten a.m. and we have a quorum and this meeting is called to order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation delivered by Commissioner Cooper.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
And the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Item number three, approved minutes of the March tenth, two thousand twenty, regular and special meetings and the March twentieth, two thousand twenty, special meeting.
Salute.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, segmented by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from the March tenth, two thousand twenty, and approval of cash statement as presented by our treasurer, Ms. McWilliams. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, two hundred eighteen thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents. On our cash report and general checking, we have eighteen million, nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. In tax pool, we have two hundred, two thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and seven cents. For total in cash funds of nineteen million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred four dollars and seventy-five cents. As you can see, I moved the money from tax pool into the general checking due to the interest rates. I checked the interest rate at tax pool this morning. It's down to zero point seven zero, so I felt that was a better place for our money to be.
Moved and approved.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, segmented by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? I agree with you, thank you very much for that, Ms. McWilliams.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by our auditor, Angela Gore. Ms. Gore, is that microphone on?
I don't have it.
Is it green? You left them up to the podium. Sorry about that. We'll fix it for the next meeting.
The pre-appropriate expenditures from March eleventh, twenty twenty, were thirty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. Pre-appropriate expenditures from March twelfth were four hundred ninety-four thousand, ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. The pre-appropriate expenditures from March the eighteenth were eleven thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and ninety-seven cents. The expenditures for today in Commissioners Court were three hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. The total expenditures and transfers are nine hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. The gross payroll from March the twenty-sixth is five hundred four thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. And the total transfers for that payroll is eight hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred three dollars and eleven cents.
Moved and approved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Pelt, segmented by Commissioner Cooper to pay the bills, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion and possible action regarding transfer to fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget as presented by Angela Gore. Ms. Gore?
Yes, sir. In the Commissioners Court on March the tenth, we accrued some budget transfers for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. And in Roden Bridge Three, the transfer was from vehicle equipment maintenance in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. I need to make a correction to that. It should be from the vehicle equipment maintenance line item, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. And then from equipment expense in an amount of five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. So that is a correction. And then I have an additional budget transfer for fiscal year two thousand nineteen for Roden Bridge Four to the precinct employees in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. And it's coming from materials and supplies in that same amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Moved and approved.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Cooper to approve the transfer as presented by Ms. Gore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other discussion? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, consider adoption of resolution eight dash twenty. This is for recognizing April, two thousand twenty, as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. It's a request made by Haley Watkins, the CASA recruitment and retention coordinator. She couldn't be here today, but I told her we would still consider adoption of this resolution. Moved and approved.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? Just want to add that we really appreciate all of the hard work that our CASA volunteers do for the children that need that service. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider adoption of resolution nine dash twenty, establishing a pay program. This is an item that I left off of last agenda that should have gone with the contract.
Moved and approved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Since Laura's not in here, I could have blamed her for that, but I didn't. Item number nine, consider termination of all spending that is not essential, including any and all capital projects, taking into consideration existing contracts. I would make the recommendation to the court, based on the natural disaster, I guess it's not a natural disaster, but it's a disaster that we're in, that with all of the unknowns that we have, I would recommend that we only spend what we have to. Of course, that's payroll and essential supplies, things such as that. And that we stop any spending on capital projects. If we have a contract that's already let, where we cannot do that, I would ask you to give me the authorization to handle those on a case-by-case basis. Other than that, I would say that we stop all unnecessary spending that's not essential during this emergency.
Second.
So that's a motion by the chair, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall, discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Cooper?
I agree with this a hundred percent, but are we putting a timeframe on that?
No, sir, I would say when we come back here and address the continuation of the disaster again, which will happen thirty days from last Friday, before that time comes up, that we discuss it again at that time. And we just keep discussing that, we're going to start meeting every Tuesday now anyway, and anytime that y'all want to discuss that, we can do so.
And just for the record, Judge, since we are trying to get this out to the community, that is including our overlay projects, correct?
Yes, sir, I think that's best for a couple of reasons. First of all, if we're able to do that this year, we might just save some money later this year. I think those prices will go down.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, anything else on this? That motion was made by myself, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider and possibly approve amendment to the disaster policy as recommended. I want to thank everybody who sent in some suggestions to us. I believe I got about seven suggestions, and the one that was the really detailed was from the sheriff. The suggestion that I have for the court today to take action on, and we can always take additional action later if you'd like to, but it's the proposed changes that we have here under the Hardin County Current Disaster Emergency Closing Policy. Basically, this will allow us, if the sheriff has to call up any reserve deputies, whether, if it's a presidentially declared disaster, in our current policy, we can pay them. If it's not, I would like to have the authority for either myself or the Commissioners Court to decide to pay those deputies if they have to come to work. Make sure I didn't misstate that, Ms. Gore. And Ms. Gore worked on this diligently with Mrs. Walton and Mr. Minnick to get this wording right. We've also submitted it to FEMA for review, but I honestly, or actually that was to TDM, Texas Division of Emergency Management, who's supposed to get with FEMA. I'd be surprised if they give us any guidance on this, but we have asked for it. One other thing I want to stipulate about that, we have now a plethora of reserve deputy constables, and this does not include them unless the sheriff asks them to work. So that way, if the sheriff needs some additional assistance and he needs those reserve deputy constables to work and he gives them an assignment, we would consider paying those guys or ladies as appropriate. Sheriff, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, sir, Judge.
Thank you, Sheriff, any questions?
Moved and approved.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion?
On the pay, it's coming at base pay?
Base pay, yes, sir. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven, consider and possibly approve implementing a freeze on hiring of any personnel in all offices and departments effective immediately. I brought this up in one of our department head meetings about a week ago. This goes in line with the item that we just took action on regarding spending on capital projects. With the exception of essential personnel, and that would be, of course, whoever the sheriff deems that to be in his office, and I would guess myself and any commissioner. With the exception of those, I think that we ought to freeze any hiring.
So moved.
That motion by Commissioner Pelt, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall, is that right? Was that you?
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twelve, consider and possibly approve an order addressing employee absences resulting from the COVID-nineteen disaster. This is a almost word-for-word order that I copied from the one that Jefferson County adopted, I think it was last Thursday or Friday. The main thing that this does is if we have an employee that's brand new, doesn't have any sick pay, that employee will have two weeks of sick pay as long as they've been here for thirty days. And that is actually a new law that's gone into effect that President Trump signed recently. So this mirrors that. It also allows the department heads to send their people home and telework, so that they continue to be paid and be on the payroll. Whatever they assign them to do, it will be up to the elected official or department head to make those assignments. I read this last Thursday or Friday, and I've had a lot since then, so I haven't read it again. Is there anything I missed? Angela?
Moved and approved.
Questions on that?
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number thirteen, consider and possibly approve county judge's request to suspend collection of rent from the BG and Papa's Courthouse Deli and Spur's Bootshine until further notice.
Moved and approved.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Pelt, they are up to date on their rent, and I anticipate that we're going to need to give them some help on their rent, and that's why I made this request. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Judge, is this due to the situation we're in now or other circumstances?
It's the situation we're in now. If I'm not mistaken, the Bootshine lady hasn't been in at all, and the deli is having trouble getting supplies, and they're just opening as they can, and they're really only serving employees that are here. They're not doing the business they were doing.
And I would go along with this, if we're saying it's not indefinite, I do read it that it's until further notice, but I would not want to suspend it after this crisis we're in, but I will agree with this.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Fourteen, authorization to submit invoice for payment in the amount of one thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-five cents to Payne's Body Shop for vehicle maintenance, a request made by Chief Minton at the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number fifteen, consider and possibly authorize county judge to spend up to seventy-five thousand dollars on supplies and services associated with the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Moved and approved.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Roberts. I want to make sure that everybody watching knows what this is about. We're having a heck of a time getting masks, gloves, gowns, test kits, and everything else that we need to respond to this disaster. Normally, those are supplies that we can request through the state. Also personnel, we can't get ambulances. We can, we've got to pay for it. Normally, you can request that from the state and they'll send it to you. That is all not available in this disaster, and that's because it is a statewide and nationwide disaster, and those people are not available. I need authorization to be able to spend the money that we need for public safety. And I promise you that I will be as frugal as possible, and I'll report to you each week how much has been spent. And I'm hoping not to have to increase that, I anticipate that we will. And I'll be asking, keeping you up to speed on that and asking for any increases as necessary. And you will see exactly what the spending is each week when we have court. Any other discussion on that, number fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Judge, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with it, only for Hardin County residents, not for anyone else.
Let me also add that the way that we have set up our regional operations center is that all five counties have come together. That's Jefferson, Hardin, Orange, Tyler, not Tyler, Jasper, and Newton. A lot of the supplies that have been bought so far have been bought by Jefferson County, and they're keeping up with any supplies that are being used. Just for instance, if we buy PPE, let's say we buy a bunch of masks, and however many people we test at the test site, that's divvied up between the counties. So it will be attributed to our people, and that is the way that we've decided to do that. And I really appreciate Judge Brannick stepping up and allowing us to do it that way. Because the way it's working, if you call and start getting prices, and by the time you call back and tell them, hey, we want this, it's gone. So as soon as it's available, and again, a mask should be around four dollars apiece, maybe six at the most. If they're three or forty dollars apiece, I'm not going to buy them unless we get to the point that that's a necessity. But I promise you that I will be frugal with the money.
So you're saying it will go to other counties as well?
I'm saying that when those supplies come in, if it's ordered that way, if it's ordered by Jefferson County, we're going to get a bill from Jefferson County for any supplies that went to Hardin County or attributed to Hardin County residents. If we buy it, we may have to do the same thing. But right now, the way it's set up, Judge Brannick has agreed to make those purchases through his purchasing department and send us a bill when this is all over. And again, I'm keeping up with those as we do it as well. Anything further? Any other comments on that? That motion was by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes four to one. Item number sixteen, consider and possibly approve request to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget as necessary to transfer the bailiff for the eighty-eighth Judicial District Court from the eighty-eighth District Judge Budget of one oh four three six to the Sheriff Law Enforcement Budget of one oh five six zero. Total amount of this transfer for the remainder of fiscal year twenty will be provided by the auditor. So, Ms. Gore?
From the eighty-eighth District Court to the Sheriff's Department, the salary amount is twenty-one thousand, two hundred twenty dollars and forty cents. The taxes is one thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. Retirement is three thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. The death supplement benefit is fifty-two dollars and six cents. Unemployment is thirty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Workers' comp is forty dollars, seventy-nine cents. Life insurance is twenty-one dollars and seven cents. Dental is three hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. Health is five thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. For a total of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So moved.
That motion by Commissioner Pelt, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, consider and possibly approve request to extend payment for health permit invoices from thirty days to ninety days, and my recommendation is to take no action on this item.
Second.
Move table.
Can we just, okay, I have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
That motion table by Commissioner Pelt, segmented by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Eighteen, permission for county judge to sign Affordable Care Act reporting tracking system known as ARCS, program agreement offered by Texas Association of Counties Health and Employees Benefits Pool. Ms. Minnesota, is this just a renewal?
Yes, sir.
Has anything changed besides the term?
No, sir, and no charge to the county.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number nineteen, present results of bids submitted for overlaying approximately seven hundred and forty feet on Thomas Road, six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four feet on Biscamp Road, and two thousand, nine hundred and forty-four feet on Old Coons Road located in Precinct Two. Ms. Sims, good morning.
Good morning. Bids were opened on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, at two P.M. in the purchasing department front office. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Erica Singletary were present. We received three bids. CMM at two forty is where you are. LB Construction at two fifty is where you are. And Mason Construction at three ninety is where you are.
Commissioner Kirkendall, would you have a recommendation for me?
Yes, sir, on here it just says presents, it doesn't give us an action. And so if it so pleases the court, if...
That was a mistake.
That's okay, if it so pleases the court, maybe we can bring it back. And if the contractors will hold it and hold that bid to which it's such time that we start doing capital improvements, then we can consider it, but if not, then we understand the times we're in, so.
Good idea. Just if you'll let me know when you want that back on the agenda, we'll put it on there correctly. Let me or Mr. Know where to fix that.
Absolutely, can we go ahead and notify the contractors and then maybe request that they hold it for an indefinite period of time and see?
Yes, sir, I can call and tell them.
Okay, and then if they say yes, then we'll bring it back maybe?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, and Ms. Sims.
Do we need to table it and bring it back up?
Well, it's no action item.
Oh, sir.
It was listed as a present-only item, we didn't put the action part on there. I apologize. Item number twenty, discussion of possible action regarding recommendation from Evaluation Committee concerning proposals received for demolition services related to the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program fiscal year two thousand seventeen, FMA seventeen, and the TM Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for Property Acquisitions, HMGP four three three two dash zero five two. Ms. Sims?
I'd like to ask Commissioner to table this item, due to the circumstances, and you need more time to evaluate the proposals.
Move to table.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Cooper to table, and you'll just advise us when to put that back on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-one, discussion of possible action regarding discretionary exemption for supplies and/or services related to the COVID-nineteen disaster pursuant to Texas Local Government Code two six two point oh two one, and then in parentheses, one, or I guess, one, an item that must be purchased in a case of public calamity if it is necessary to make the purchase promptly to receive the necessity of the citizens or to preserve the property of the county. And two, an item necessary to preserve or protect the public health or safety of the residents of the county. Ms. Sims?
This is to help us purchase those items, like you were saying before, that are very hard to get. At this point, a lot of things aren't available anywhere, and like you said, if we try to get three quotes and follow our policy, it's gone by the time we have a P.O., so.
I move to approve.
Second.
That motion by the chair, segmented by whom?
I don't know.
Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-two, discussion only of any item, not on the agenda without taking any action. I'd like to start, and I want to start by saying that I appreciate everybody bearing with me and with emergency management and with each other as we go through this disaster. As you know, I've been working since Saturday in the, what we're calling the Regional Emergency Operations Center, which is located in the Jefferson County Courthouse. I've asked the sheriff to assist me with anything here at this courthouse, any needs that any of the department heads or the elected officials have regarding their offices, or basically anything here at this courthouse that you need, if you'll contact the sheriff. He's graciously agreed to help me with that, and he'll probably get me back for it later. But I appreciate you, Sheriff. As far as testing goes, the testing site down in Mid-County opened this morning. We do have plans to open three more sites throughout the five region, five county region. Right now, we do not have the people, the PPE, or the testing kits to open any other site. I am hopeful that sometime next week, we can open a second site, and we're going to evaluate that based on the need. So if a certain area seems to be having more positives than another, then we will probably look at locating that testing site there. And I don't know if that will be in Hardin, Orange, or Jasper County, but it will be in one of those counties. This morning, when that testing site opened, I got a report driving here this morning at nine fifteen. They tested eight people the first hour. Probably wasn't supposed to put that out, but I just did. And so we're doing better than we thought we would. I think the number they anticipated was much lower. And if we can keep the testing kits coming, we will keep testing people that need to be tested. The number that's posted on our website and on several Facebook pages in the region to call for screening is only for screening. Please don't call that number if you have a question about the COVID virus. If you have any question about that, the Regional Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission has set up information land through two one one. If you'll dial option six, they will answer questions that you have or direct you to the proper place to get your questions answered. Only call that screening number if you need to be screened, if you are actually sick. That's the only reason you should call that number. Do not report to the test site without either a unique ID, or without your unique ID number and a scheduled time and date to be there. If you show up, they're going to turn you around, and that just creates more chaos, confusion, and emotions. So as we get those calls and the people are approved to be tested, we're getting them scheduled, and we'll get you in there as quick as we can. As far as results on those tests, we've been told to expect anywhere from three to six days on result testing. The test kits that we've gotten are from a local company out of Jasper County. And the, I don't know where the lab is, but we overnight them, and we're told that the results will be back in three to six days. I'm sure that determines on the load of test vials that they receive there. As far as the courthouse goes, I'd like to ask the sheriff to come up and just talk about what we're doing here at the courthouse regarding access by the public and as far as staffing goes.
Thank you, Judge. As you know, we're committed to trying to keep the courthouse open. Where people who absolutely have to come here and do business have a way to make that transaction. We've put the word out and we continue to advertise that. We really want folks to try to call ahead, the two four six fifty-two hundred number. Call ahead, reach the department that they have a need to come visit, visit with them. A lot of things can be taken care of on the phone, by email, or by regular mail. And so if it's absolutely necessary that they have to come in, they're able to work with that department and make a decision on when the best time to come, maybe make an appointment. As you know, we are trying to limit the mass of people that's coming through the front door. We've set up screening locations both at the main entrance to the courthouse and at the county annex, where everyone who comes through, that's all employees of the county and all members of the public, where they're screened, they're asked some basic questions, and then a temple scan for body temperature. We're using that as a screening tool to prevent somebody who possibly may be symptomatic from coming inside the courthouse. Again, we're monitoring that real closely. We've set up some offices where normally would have a larger group, more than ten, in attendance. And so we've gone in and removed the chairs from various offices and various courtrooms, trying to accommodate that, trying to do our part in some distancing from one another. Right now, we continue to just implore with the public, if you absolutely have to have business at the courthouse, please call. Call ahead, make arrangements. Some of the department heads are having to amend their hours. They're suffering like the private sector. They have employees that are out, they have employees that have stayed home to self-quarantine. They may be out because they're sick, so they're having to amend as well with their work hours. And so we can't stress that enough to say, please call ahead if you just absolutely have to come. Other than that, from the law enforcement side, a quick update. We have supplies and equipment provisions, and law enforcement still continues. We haven't shut anything down, we have no plans to shut anything down. We are trying to take advantage of things that we maybe could work via telephone. But in all honesty, most of the law enforcement needs have become a face-to-face issue out in the public. Bad guys unfortunately still commit crimes, and there's still a need for us to be there and be handling that. The citizens need to know that they're safe, they're going to see us, and we're out there and we're working. We have arranged, we have the proper equipment for our deputies should they have to go into an area or go into a home. We have that equipment, they've all been trained on how to use that, how to decontaminate if they have to go into an area, and we're working with the local fire departments as well. There is a way for us to flag on a confidential basis any address of a person who has been ordered home quarantined by the Health Department. That information is on a restricted need-to-know basis, and police, fire, and EMS are notified of that should the occasion arise for them to have to go to that location. And so we've taken precautions there to protect the county workers as much as we can. We're satisfied that the jail, again, through the courts and prosecutors, we've really tried to reduce that population in the jail as much as possible. That also helps us monitor and closely watch for any infectious that will be coming into that county jail. So just an update, right now, I'm very satisfied with the direction that we're headed, but it's very fluid, and it's day-to-day, and we find ourselves making changes on the fly to accommodate whatever latest information that comes our way. So, any questions from the court?
Do we have a way to screen the inmates?
Yes, we also have screening at the door of the jail that's in a little bit more detail than what the public is going through here. And again, if they don't meet the requirements, then whoever the arresting officer or agency is must have them medically cleared by a doctor before we're going to allow them inside that jail. Keep in mind, we still have Dr. Lindberg and our medical staff that's on duty closely watching and monitoring developments within the jail. A knock on wood and tell you, we have no cases, we have no symptoms at this point. But quite frankly, it's tough to get in that jail, and it's, we're putting you through the hoops. We want to know where you're coming from, what's going on, what your symptoms are, before we're going to allow you inside there. We have shut down some of the forms of visitation inside the jail. Unfortunately, we've suspended some religious services that have been brought in from outside along with some AA meetings and some positive self-esteem meetings that we do with the inmates. We have made arrangements, though, for the inmates to continue to practice religion of their choice. We have a room that's available in there, we limit the number of inmates that can be in there at any one time. They're still allowed to go in there, they can observe them on the silence, they can pray, whatever they think is necessary, and there is some religious materials. So we haven't totally taken that away, we're just modifying on how we're able to deliver that for the inmate.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the uh, SLSBB if they have any questions?
Did Tyler County join the regional task or uh?
They have not yet, they're discussing it, and uh, we, we've made them that offer, and if they'd like to join us, they are welcome, and they've been told that, and and if they decide to do that, I wish we'd have done it at the same time, but if they do, we'll figure out how to make that work. Any other questions? What about the Brooks Report?
Just one, only uh, two one one number, option six, does that replace the hotline number?
The hotline number is only for people who are sick, so the uh, two one one option six is for que- uh, option six is for questions, I guess that's how we can remember it, option six. Six is for questions at two one one, you can also call your local health department, so in Harden County, that number is four oh nine, two four six, five one eight eight. That number is answered twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and it is uh, being overwhelmed, and so if you call and don't get through, just call back, and we'll, we will get you or leave a message, and somebody will call you back. Does uh, any member of the court have anything that they'd like to ask or say?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
On the departments that are meeting the public, like the tax office and then the health department, I think they're gonna uh, be affected more than any other departments here unless there's some I'm not aware of, so I've touched base with uh, Ms. Cook this morning, some of us that are, have a reduction in staff due to this. I asked her if there was any way our employees could come in and help her out in her office, but those two offices are specialized offices, so there's not much that another employee from the county could do, they're not trained in that area, but any, any uh, department that needs, uh, is short on personnel or anything, this would be a good time where we could move, move around to assist, so.
The health department is, anybody that can help answer phones, if you will let Erin Tucker and or Sharon Whitley know they are looking for people to help answer phones and other things like deliver supplies and things like that, let me just ask this, if anybody's asked to deliver supplies to one of our testing sites, don't just do that, let's uh, let's make sure that doesn't happen, it needs to be delivered by certain people. And I can see where maybe something like that happens, where someone's just called and says, hey, we need some gloves out here, and somebody just runs them out there, let's don't do that. Commissioner Kirkendall?
Uh, just uh, hats off to all the small businesses and uh, citizens for all their hard work. Uh, the grocery stores, stay and stop, uh, the restaurants, uh, giving us options on carryout and delivery, so appreciate that, keeping some normalcy through this process.
Mr. Pelt?
Don't have a thing.
Commissioner Roberts? Sheriff, is anybody outside the door trying to come in?
Uh, no, sir, Judge.
Anybody else in the room have anything?
Judge, I do.
I, I do have one other item I want to address, but go ahead, Ms. Cook, come on up.
I just wanna uh, say that John has worked diligently with us to try to get our drive-through um, open. And uh, it is functional, we don't have it open, but uh, if, in the event that, which our calls, what, when are you, when's the courthouse gonna close to the public? At this time, we're here, that's all we can say, um, and then um, Missy's working, trying to get us a drop box, which would be extremely helpful. Um, our uh, MVBA attorney notified me this morning that we're the last man standing in their group. But um, but so many of them do have a drive-through window, we will try to, you know, to operate through that if, if the courthouse does close to the public, that way we can still have some uh, transactions going on.
I was hoping that we could get that drive-through open until we could find a drop box, so if that's, if it's operational, let's open that up if it's okay with the sheriff. If you just work with him on that, and let's open it if we can and keep people from coming in.
To keep people from coming in.
Yes, ma'am, that would be my thoughts, and of course, just if you'll work with the sheriff on that, we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
It kinda goes into what I was gonna say about uh, when or if the courthouse may close. I anticipate that will only happen if there's a stay-at-home order issued. Um, Harris County just issued theirs this morning, Galveston County last night. Uh, I think Travis and Bear County have announced uh, those happening today as well, so that's probably another big question I'm asked that I forgot to cover earlier. I can tell you it's being talked about, uh, we'll talk today, I think there's supposed to be a call around two or three o'clock this afternoon, we're all, uh, eight of the county judges in this area are gonna talk about that. Right now, we're all looking at the different orders that have been put out, and we're trying to do our very best to stay on the same page and the same message to all of our citizens, and try to do the same thing, 'cause just as I've been saying this whole time, if we do something totally different from our neighbors, first of all, it's confusing to the public, and second of all, you may be hurting things more than helping, so we're really doing, um, I don't wanna brag or but we're doing a good job of communicating and trying to sa- stay on the same page with all of the orders that come out. I know people are confused because we have a one, a two, a three, and I think Jefferson County's up to a sixth order, and it's hard to keep up with that, and uh, as the sheriff said earlier, this is a very fluid situation, and as we get new information and new guidance and recommendations from the state and even the federal authorities, we act on that, and we just try to do the best that we can with the knowledge that we have. Mr. Roberts? I just have Mark, and the majority of the people coming in the courthouse, are they going to the tax office?
They are, the major- well, the majority is going to either the tax office or one of the parks offices.
So by opening the window, it'll knock that down considerably?
Yeah, for that office, but. Anyway, if anybody wanted to drop off anything for any of the other offices, of course, we would accept it as well as if we have a drop box. If someone needs to put a finer fee or anything like that, of course, we would be more than happy to deliver that to the proper office. Note, if anybody, you know, could get, there would be no problem. We were told that it was uh, and I know it is a sor- uh, a shortage on the, the wipes and everything in the, the office, but we handle many, both the, you know, so we just need extra.
I would recommend gloves, yeah, I would recommend using gloves, and then uh,
We do.
We do have orders for wipes and hand sanitizer and everything, and I think if I'm not mistaken, the earliest uh, delivery we date, date that we have on hand sanitizers may be four, so uh.
We are using gloves for, yeah, for every transaction that comes in.
Good idea, Commissioner?
Angela, would it be prudent for us to put maybe a basket on that table for vouchers? So like if our clerks or whatever come over to drop off bills, they don't have to actually access the courthouse if we're just dropping off bills, you think we could do that?
The basket, where you.
You know how we can turn them into the treasurer's office? If we had something at the door to where our secretaries or whatever didn't have to come in to the courthouse? I'm just trying to limit traffic coming in.
It's a good idea, what about uh, will you take them at the drive-through?
Yes, sir.
Just put them in a big envelope that says uh, treasure on it, and drop them off at the drive-through, and then when they get their drop box, will you take them there?
Yes, sir, we'll be happy to.
I think that's a good idea, thank you. Anybody else have anything further?
Move to chart, second.
That motion by Commissioner Pelt, signed by Commissioner Kirkendall, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.